All the meeting to order and I am going to ask our town manager to read the disclaimer.
Yes, just a reminder to everybody that this meeting is being recorded. So we will post it on the towns website and YouTube page for viewing at a later time. We asked that if anybody has a question that you please use the raise hand function, or you can also email, or excuse me, you can also send me a message in the chat function, and I will call on you at the appropriate time. Do ask that folks please identify themselves for the record. So if you could please state your name, the street that you live on, if you're a resident of Somerset, or the organization or town, organization that you represent, or town that you live in, if you are a visitor. If for some reason this meeting gets interrupted in a disruptive way that does not allow it to continue, we will immediately end the meeting and send out a new invite for folks to join so that we can rejoin the new link and continue the meeting. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, and we will start with our opportunity for residents or guests to make public comments. Mr. Town Manager, has anybody indicated at this time they wish to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda as presented. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I saw Zoe Cazzer first. Is there discussion hearing none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion? I see the, thank you, is there a second? I see Zoe Cazzer. Is there discussion hearing none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Next item is public hearing motion to consider approval of a building permit application submitted by Frances G. Shepherd and Patricia Dinsmore for the construction of a deck and accessibility ramp to the house located at the property, on the property at 5410 Surrey Street. Mr. Town Manager.
Can I just add, we're, I'm just making sure I'm on the right agenda. What happened to item two?
Oh, wait a minute, Matt printed out the wrong. I think the first item is the apiary, isn't that right?
That's on my agenda, yes.
I'm sorry, Matt printed this out right before.
I'm sorry, I printed off the wrong one.
The wrong one. Okay, so Matt, can you, thank you, Councilmember Zoe Cazzer.
I'm just trying to follow from Denver for my last one.
So, Mr. Town Manager, can you read the specifics?
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry. So, um, we have an updated MOU. I'm sorry, so this is to approve an updated MOU with Sarah Keel, who is a representative of the Montgomery County Beekeepers Association. After some negotiations, the Ms. Keel had expressed some reservations about certain provisions in the contract that was previously approved. Specifically, she was concerned about the town retaining the right to remove the bee boxes on short notice. And so this updated MOU indicates that only under extreme circumstances would the town have that right. And she also expressed that she was uncomfortable signing the MOU without being provided liability coverage by the town as she does not currently carry her own insurance. And so towns reached out to our insurance provider, the local government insurance trust known as Legit, which indicated to us that a volunteer is not covered under the town's insurance policy. And they requested a copy of our proposed agreement. And actually, today I heard back and they determined that beekeeping was not an activity that was not covered under our current insurance policy. And so they recommended a beekeeping insurance. So they, they sent me over there and I've requested a specific quote. The low premium for that would be $350 a year. And so if the town wanted to provide that insurance for Ms. Keel, we would, we would purchase that insurance policy on her behalf.
Okay, so I just wanted to add a few things. So the beekeeper, Sarah Keel, is a lovely person. She's not a, a, like a business, she's not in this, this is her hobby more than a business. She's a nurse. And so I think she misunderstood the process and, and everything, which resulted in what you voted on at the last meeting. And she didn't understand that she could have asked questions about it and raised all these issues. So we, we have been meeting, and then, and then she took sick. So I'm sorry it's taken so long. We wanted to do it in a, in a different way, but it ended up, we put it, ended up putting it on this agenda tonight. And she had wanted to be here, but she texted me about an hour ago and said that I think her daughter is in town and she, she, that was a priority for her. So I, and she, you know, this is a, you know, Matt and I and the town attorney really wanted to make it comfortable and easy for her because this is, you know, this is really a gift to the town. And so we've taken a lot of time with her. And, and so I hope you will appreciate all that, you know, why it took so long. And, and we wanted, you know, we, we wanted to make sure that she was totally comfortable with this, this arrangement. So with that, Council President Sean, do you have any questions?
For Matt, so Matt, is 350 something we would need to approve tonight as an expenditure for this project? Is that it?
Yeah, this would be an additional expenditure. And I don't.
Yeah, let me just add something. So there, so there is only a small window of time in which you can move the bees. I've learned so much about this in the last two weeks. But the window lasts until, and then, and then she works and her husband works. So she, she would very much appreciate they, the council approves something tonight so that it can be signed and she can move the bees next weekend. Because after that, I think that you lose the window. So, and we also had a hard time getting all this information from Legit and everybody else. Okay, I'm sorry, does that answer your question? Council President Sean, do you have any more?
No, that's it for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
So this proposal as written would, would require two policies of insurance. We have to verify that the town is covered and that the policy for the beekeeper is available as well. So I don't know if.
See, I don't know, did, well, I think I'll let Matt answer that because when, in our meeting, I think that that's what you asked him to find out, right? Matt, do you know?
So would the town be covered by its general liability insurance? You, you mentioned before that beekeeping was not, not covered? So I'm not sure.
Negative was big confusing.
Yeah.
So, so Legit said that we would need to get the separate bee insurance, which is full liability, full general liability, including any products for beekeeping related exposures.
So that would cover both the town and the beekeeper?
Exactly, exactly. Because I was operating based on our conversation that, that the beekeeper would be acting as an agent of the town under, under this agreement.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
So does that answer your question, Mr. Town?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
By the way, everyone, it was, it was as if we were back in law school and the beekeeper knew the right questions to ask. It was very impressive, it was very impressive. Okay, Councilmember Zoe Cazzer, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Matt, could you just clarify? Because I know we're thinking about, or you all are thinking about giving away the honey. So that if we give away honey, when you said the products, so if we gave away honey and then something, someone ended up getting sick from the honey, that would be covered by the, the insurance as well? Is that what you meant by products?
Yes, that's right.
And we're certain of, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about approving anything without having Ron take a look at it. And I realize the beekeeper may be rushed at this point because of the bees, but.
Well, Ron is.
I would, I would want Ron to be able to have the time to read and make sure that the town was fully covered by this before, before we approved it.
Yeah, I, I'll be honest, I don't know enough about the, the product itself. So that, that may be something that I have to do a little bit more homework on. Because I just know from personal experience, my, my stepdad actually had bees that he kept and he wasn't able to sell any honey without going through, I think, this is Vermont versus Maryland, so the rules could be completely different. But you had to go through the Department of Agriculture, something like that, to get basically a food license to ensure that you're, you're properly sanitizing and.
Right.
Going through all those steps.
Has, has she ever sold honey before this beekeeper?
She does have a website where she sells jars of honey.
I, I don't, so tonight, I'll let the town attorney approve that, this. But we, we, we didn't even talk to her about the selling of the honey. And so I don't know if that's something that, was that approved, Mr.?
Well, we, we were, we were talking about giving it away. There was discussion among the council.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point. I don't, we, we haven't, we didn't talk to her about that. So I, was that in the, was?
So I don't, I don't recall that being in the, the proposal from the.
I don't, I don't, I think it should be clear when the council makes a motion that, I don't think that's, should be part of this because we didn't even discuss that with her.
And the quote that I requested as well from, from the bee insurance, I, I wrote down zero dollars in anticipated sales of any product, so.
Well, yeah, I should clarify. The discussion was about giving away jars of honey to new homeowners in town. It wasn't for sale.
I don't think that, I don't think that's in the MOU. So that should be clear, right, Mr. Town?
It's, it's not in the MOU.
So that is it? So, so in the motion tonight, you can make it clear that that shouldn't be. Because once you make the motion to, whatever you decide tonight, then the town attorney will be charged with, with, you know, negotiating the final MOU like he was last time.
Okay, yeah. My, my only other point that I want to make, and I'll, I'll be brief, is this was supposed to be something that was supposedly free to the town. And this has been far from free. Ron has spent, I'm sure, several hours on it. Matt has spent many hours. Our maintenance staff ended up installing the, the fence. We're now paying for insurance for the beekeeper. I would bet that we're close to, that this free proposal is now close to $1,500 or $2,000. And, and that's something for future council members to realize. When people say they're giving you something for free, this often happens with gifts to the town, that they are, they're actually, they're, they're not free at all and there are built in costs. And Matt, maybe you can tell us how many hours you've put into this. And maybe Ron can say how many hours he's put into it. But it has certainly not been, remember, the, the fence was supposed to be installed by the environment committee and then that fell apart because legally Ron felt that that wasn't the right thing for us to do.
You're absolutely right, there's no free.
There's nothing is free.
The only thing free about this is the gift of the beekeeper services, but there's.
There's, there's nothing free. And I don't even know if the environment committee has talked to the principal of Somerset, if the principal will allow the students to wander over there to visit the beehive. So, you know, I'm sorry that we're feeling so rushed into this because once again, you know, the beekeeper has asked us to do so and then she can't be here tonight. But I, I think it was, I think it was a lovely idea, but it was not, by no means was this free to the town. Even the money that we're going, not to bring up a sore subject, but the money that we're going to bring up for the lab swimmers will not cover the cost of, of this bee project. And I don't have any more questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Peele.
Yes, I have a number of things I wanted to talk about. I'll start by following on Barbara's point just because I think for the incoming council members, and we haven't had much of an opportunity to talk about this before, but we actually have a standing policy in place on gifts. And we talked, you know, it's been in place for a number of years now and the reasons for it, I think, are pretty clear to everybody. But, you know, basically, under our gift policy, we only accept trees and benches and picnic tables. And so we, you know, if I'm going to be technical about it, you know, I think we probably need to talk about waiving that policy in order to accept this gift. So I'll just follow on with Barbara for that. I, I think there have been some expenses associated with this and it's a shame that this wasn't mapped out from the beginning. On the insurance, I guess I'd like to come back to Matt on this. I understand that the premium estimate might be something like $350 per year. Can you tell me a little bit more about the liability coverage and how much that covers, what the dollars covered are? You just said full general liability, but is there a cap on that?
Yeah, it's $1 million per occurrence, $2 million aggregate.
Okay. All right, well, I hope, I hope that Ron thinks that that's the right amount.
Well, I'm, I'm not giving you an opinion on what the right insurance amount is. I mean, to Barbara's point, you know, Barbara said, we got to make sure the town is fully covered. I cannot guarantee that. So, you know, in a wrongful death case, the plaintiff is going to ask for as much as they think is necessary to make them whole. And it depends partly on the decedent's wage earning capability over the remainder of their life. The town does have limited liability under the Local Government Tort Claims Act, which, you know, limits liability to $800,000 in the aggregate. But a clever plaintiff may be able to demonstrate that those limits shouldn't apply. There has been instances where if a municipality is engaged in a proprietary function like maintaining a park, that the, the caps of the Local Government Tort Claims Act don't apply. So, you know, $1 million in the town of Somerset probably is not enough.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm very glad to see that all of the incoming council members are on this call because I do think, first of all, I wanted the chance to talk about the gift policy. But secondly, you know, we, we don't usually talk about insurance at the council level because it's just sort of there. And unless we change what we're doing to some extent, you know, we don't really need to talk about our policies very much. It's sort of up to Matt and Jeffrey to make sure that they're there and we're paying for them and that they're sufficient for a municipality our size and where we live and so on. But, you know, we're introducing something new into the town. The last time we really talked about insurance, as far as I know, was in connection with the sledding hill. So it's just something to think about. I, I will go a little bit farther on this and, and in order to, on this project. I mean, I hear what Jeffrey is saying about the timetable and the comfort level and the comfortable, you know, whether or not we can make the beekeeper comfortable. And to me, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, this is my last council meeting. I'm not here to make the beekeeper comfortable. And I'll just say that I think that it, it should not go forward even a week from now if there is not an insurance policy signed. Because it's not good enough just to get an estimate from this beekeeping company with the lack of detail that we have tonight and to push forward on this artificial timetable. If this is something the town really wants to do, it'll still be a possibility a year from now. If not with this beekeeper, maybe with someone else. And maybe you don't go down the road of a gift. Maybe you go into a more specific contract relationship in order to make this happen. You know, again, being pushed, pushed into this, although I'm sure the beekeeper is a lovely person, but anytime you're talking about a gift, you know, changes the dynamic and it pushes, puts pressure on the council to accept it. And I don't hear enough good reasons tonight to accept it given the uncertainties related to the insurance. So, I mean, if we're going to approve Matt looking into something, I guess we could approve some dollar amount for the, for the premium per year. Maybe he can find out if there are any other insurance companies that will offer insurance for this. Maybe this is not the only one out there. It's a little discouraging to me that our insurance company won't cover this. And I think it really gives me pause as to whether or not we should even be doing this. That's all I have for it right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Serko.
Yes, I'd just like to, I think, clarify some of the points of the discussion here. This is a proposal brought forward by the Town's Environment Committee after conducting a lot of research and outreach to the Beekeepers Association and Montgomery County. This is not a gift. It's a pilot program, a one-year pilot to see how it works for the town and see how it works for the beekeeper. It is somewhat unfortunate that some of these costs have, or, or use of resources have added up over the last couple of weeks as we've worked on it. And I guess that's a lesson learned that sometimes there are unanticipated costs. But it's, it's a pilot program and the purpose is to, to good things for the environment, help out, you know, pollination in the town, do a good thing for residents. That with regards to honey, it's not part of the agreement with the beekeeper. There have been some discussions, maybe we could make some such arrangements, but it is not part of the pilot program. So that's all.
Jeffrey. Councilor Bar, sorry.
Thank you. I understand that a couple of the council members have concerns still at this point. And I don't think anything I can say can really fully address these concerns. I will say that there is no amount that we could have as our limit that would be completely reassuring in anything, frankly, whether it's beekeeping or lightning striking the town hall. There is, there is no answer to that, is what it boils down to. Is this the right amount? Therefore, the question cannot be answered. It is an amount above what our own legal limit is. And in that sense, it is appropriate. But let me step, step back and say, look, I think we all know the literature on this now, which is that there are honeybees in this country are collapsing. There's been tremendous loss of honeybees. We understand something about it, but there's still this agreement about why there's been such honeybee loss. And anything we can do to restore honeybees is vital, not just for the bees, but for us. Because bees pollinate between 30 and 60% of all our footstuffs. And if we lose bees, we are losing food. So contributing in this way is a very small contribution to saving the bees. But they are vital to us and we shouldn't forget that. That's it.
Are we still going around or not, Barney?
You have, did you, do you want to go for another round one? Did you have a question?
Barney does, yeah.
I'd like to make just a, a couple of, of comments. The first is I, I don't agree that this is a gift. The, this, this is, they're her bees, they're her hives, and she could take them back anytime that she could transport. So for me, that's not, not an issue. And Robin, I'm, you know, happy to hear you talk about the value of bees. I, I think probably every single council member believes that the bees are very valuable and that we need ways to protect the bees. I don't think that's what this is about. The question really, I think, is have we had enough time to put in place insurance that would make the council feel as though the town is sufficiently protected? And our attorney's not going to give us a number, but I did hear him say that in a town like Somerset, the, the amount that our town manager put out with the basic policy didn't sound like enough. Maybe I'm putting words into his mouth, maybe I heard a tone of voice, but it seems to me we need to look at other levels of, of coverage. And we don't have a lot of time. Maybe there's a way to say if, if sufficient limits can be identified in the next week, we could put that into the motion. But I think we need a little bit more research on the insurance limits.
That's a really good question and that's something that we grappled with when we talked to, to the beekeeper. And it's, I think, I mean, I'm going to let the town attorney respond, but I, I think that the, the, the limit, you know, the, the amount of the insurance is what the council is comfortable with. Isn't that right, Mr. Town Attorney? Isn't that what you were saying?
Yes, that's right. That's right, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, of course, when I advise my client, my client has to decide what level of risk is acceptable and how to mitigate the risk with appropriate insurance. You know, if I think there's a 1% risk of harm, I'm still going to advise you to take steps to cover yourself in the event of that, you know, 1% chance of harm. But the council can decide what level of risk is, is appropriate. You know, maybe, maybe it's 1%, maybe it's more, maybe it's less. But, you know, the, the council can, can weigh that in determining what level of insurance is appropriate. I, I don't know what current insurance the town has in place, but yes. Like I could think of one other town that I think they have a $5 million umbrella policy, you know, to, to cover things that aren't covered by the Local Government Tort Claims Act limitations. You know, in the, in the draft, that's before you, we had suggested through the discussions with Ms. Keel. And again, this, this is, this agreement is reflective of her requests of the council. A $2 million to $3 million in the aggregate policy just to cover her. So, you know, it, it came to light that she didn't have insurance covering herself and.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's so, I think that the, these issues that are being raised by the council president and by Councilmember Peele are so valid because this is, she, she really needs to have her own attorney when we're having, you know, this is, this is, this is way more, it's, it's way more complicated than the recommendation from the committee, you know? And yes, we have spent a lot of time on it. But we have to make sure, you know, it's our, we all took a pledge to, you know, to do the, do things in the best interest of the town. And, and, and the, it's, it's too, it's, we haven't even been able to determine the amount of the risk, you know? Much less trying to protect her, so.
Why, did she say, I mean, it's so hard to talk about this. Usually when we don't, when we're going over contracts and the vendors aren't there, we table it until they can come before the council. And I, I guess the timing for her for tonight just wasn't right. But what is her concern? Why does she feel she needs $2 to $3 million? Why does she feel she needs $2 to $3 million of coverage as an individual?
It's mainly because we explained to her that she's taking the risk. She just, you know, it was difficult to have these discussions with her because, you know, Ron is representing the town, not her. And she was asking a lot of questions that she really needs to ask her attorney. Isn't that correct, Mr. Town Attorney? So we were trying to be, you know, we were trying to, we were trying to to assist her without compromising our role, you know?
Yeah, that's right, Mr. Mayor. So the discussion, my apologies.
Go ahead.
The discussion started because the
Go on, Ron.
The original draft, the original draft required the beekeeper to indemnify the town. So if the town got sued because someone got stung, you know, the town would look for indemnification from her. So we explained to her what that means. And she didn't think that was appropriate because obviously the, you know, the recommendation from the committee was, you know, we've found someone who's willing to come in and donate her time to educate people about bees, to actually bring these very valuable bees into the town. And so she thought, well, rightly so, you know, I'm doing you a favor and now you're going to require me to indemnify you? She didn't think that was fair. So this proposal suggests, well, we'll cover the cost of an insurance policy for you. And we'll delete the indemnity requirement. So if someone sues her, you know, she defends herself. If someone sues the town, the town will defend itself based on, you know, the town's insurance coverage, which would be separate from, potentially separate from the policy that we'd be acquiring for her.
Can I, can I add?
Hold on one second. I think, Council President Shaw, are you done with your questions, right?
Clarify. So Ron, you're saying we may need two policies or a policy that covers the beekeeper and her liability and a policy that covers the town and its liability of, say, several school kids are stung and one of them goes into anaphylactic shock.
Well, as Matt noted, it might be possible to do it with one policy. You know, if she's, while she's here taking care of the bees in the town, she's acting as the town's agent. So, you know, if that's the setup, then it could be, it could be one policy.
But we don't have anything in front of us that would tell us whether we could do things with one policy or whether we're going to need two and how much it would cost to cover.
Yeah, because it was a new issue for Legit. Legit apparently hadn't addressed it before, so, you know, they had to do some research.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zuinghauser, it's your turn.
Yeah, I just have a question that I imagine you all know the answer to or Matt does. When do the bees have to be moved by? Why are we in such a hurry for this? What's the calendar for the bees?
The window for this year is, will end next week. That's the reason.
By the end of next week?
No, I think she said, given her schedule, the last time she could move the bees would be next weekend.
Okay, thank you. No more questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson Peel.
Yes, I had a couple of things I wanted to say. First of all, just back on the gift concept, I just want to be clear that I was responding on that directly to what Jeffrey was calling this, which was a gift. So if we're not going to call it a gift, then we don't need to talk about the gift policy. But that leads me to my second point, which is that it seems to me that there's a tremendous amount of deference being paid to this beekeeper. And we have gone now from a position where we agreed last time we talked about this as having the beekeeper indemnify us. And we've now not only given up on that, but we are paying to insure her and also paying to insure the town. And we're buying more coverage for her than we are for the town. So I don't see how this, we're buying $2 to $3 million of coverage for her and we have $1 million to $2 million cap for us. That's what I heard Matt say. So I'm hearing that we are in a worse position than we were before. And I can take it as given among the council members that we all understand why we want to have bees be supported in the environment. So I don't think we need to debate that anymore. That's not what we're talking about right now. What we're talking about right now is whether this project makes sense for the town of Somerset. And when you're talking about adding risk to the town of Somerset with all of the expenses and costs that could occur in the future, then I ask, what are the benefits to the town of Somerset? And I appreciate that the Environmental Committee has made this a priority and has found a person who is, sounds like a wonderful person who is willing to donate time and bring her valuable bees over to the town. But it sounds to me that not only are we building up expenses, but we're also exposing ourselves to a bigger amount of risk and have lost the ability to be indemnified by the beekeeper. So I don't hear this as something that we should rush into in a week in any way. And I recognize that the next opportunity for the council meet would be a council that I'm not on. But I think this is being rushed based on somebody else's schedule, in particular, the bee's schedule. And it doesn't make sense to me that we would enter into any kind of relationship that would expose the town to risk in the future without doing a lot more research on this. And I, you know, again, I think it's a great idea and we've got the fence up and maybe someday it'll happen. But I would say that it should not happen without a solid insurance policy for the town in place because I agree with Ron, if you're looking at a $2 million cap on liability for the town of Somerset, that's going to be gone in a minute. And I think we're, frankly, this is crazy to be pushing this through on this timetable. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Circo, did you have more?
I don't have anything further to add.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Barr.
Yeah, what insurance do we cover at the pool for injuries at the pool?
Mr. Town Manager, do you know the answer?
I tried to pull up our insurance documents really quickly. Generally, our current, the town's current insurance policy covers personal injury, things like that. And that the limit is $1 million per occurrence and $3 million in annual aggregate.
Okay, now, I personally, I do believe that the likelihood of injury at the pool is far higher than the likelihood of injury from bees. But nevertheless, that does seem to be a good comparator to what we're actually having to wrestle with now. So I'll just leave it at that point.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there?
I just say one other thing, except that we don't have the policy in front of us tonight for us to look at or for our town attorney to look at. So I agree with you that it is helpful to have those dollars to dollars comparisons. And it is a use.
Oops.
And we're also looking at expenses for paying for insurance for the beekeeper.
I mean, that is true. The council doesn't usually vote. There isn't, you know, we tried as hard as we could to get this information. We, she was, we weren't able to meet with her until last Thursday. And, you know, you can't get this information that quickly. So, and it's not a good idea to vote on something without that kind of information, really. So, Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments? Any resident or guests wish to make a comment?
Not at this time.
Okay, Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I'll take a stab at it. I move that we approve the revised memorandum of understanding with the appropriate insurance in place as determined by the town manager.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion.
Are we gonna go around the room again or are we gonna?
No, however you, just whoever wants to.
Okay, so I appreciate Steve getting the conversation started and Robin. I think what we don't have in the motion, just before we even get to, you know, whether or not I would support it, I don't hear, first of all, we don't have an approval of the proposed premium rate or even a cap on what we would be willing to spend on a premium on an annual policy. So I think it would be worth the council discussing, you know, what's our outside edge and what we're even willing to pay on a policy, presuming we could find one. You know, maybe $350 per year is the right number, but maybe we end up wanting Matt to go out and shop for this a little bit and find out if there are any policies that might have some better terms. Maybe they would be a little bit more expensive. Maybe we would want to see whether that made them worth it. So I guess that's my first point. And then secondly, I think, I think, I do think that it's, you know, I think that it would be important to not move forward with this MOU without an insurance policy actually in place and signed. So I think that does affect the effects where we are tonight. I'll just be clear on that. You know, I've already stated all of my concerns about this. And if we were talking about an insurance policy tonight, it would probably be an easier conversation, but we're not.
Okay, is there further discussion?
It seems to me if we're looking at insurance and what's proposed in the agreement is $2 million for a single occurrence and $3 million in the aggregate for the beekeeper. And it seems like the town ought to have at least the same coverage for this particular kind of event as the beekeeper. And I don't know, you know, how much that would cost or whether you could do it all in the same policy or whatever.
Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, if we, there is time pressure on us here because if we can't come up with a motion that will allow the hives to be installed week and after this one, then it's going to be a year's loss. And that would be sad when we all really very want, very much want this to happen. So I'm hoping that we can come up with a motion that will allow it to work. I think we're very close to the kind of coverage limits that we will be comfortable with. I'm hoping that the pool comparator has made people see that we were comfortable with the policy there that is indeed very comparable to what is being proposed now. And so I don't think there's any justification for us going very much beyond that. Marnie's point about $2 million for the beekeeper and $3 million total. If we can negotiate a policy that way, then good. But where are other people on that?
I guess my reaction to that would be that we have an existing set of activities that we have in the town that the town has insurance for, right? We have tennis, we have the swimming pool, we have our parklands, we have town parties, we have things at the town hall and so on. This is introducing something new in terms of adding a risk to the town. So I think while your point about the level of coverage is a helpful one in terms of understanding just kind of how people view risky behavior and how much money they're willing to insure people for it, I think what we're not talking about switching out something, we're talking about adding something new. And I recognize that the premium dollars, you know, if we're talking about $350 to $500 per year, maybe that doesn't feel like that much. But, you know, that's just for her. I'm not actually sure if that's for her policy or for our policy or even what the total dollars amount would be for the two policies. So again, not only are we not looking at an insurance policy, we also don't know the full amount of the premiums per year. So we're adding risk for an unknown amount of insurance coverage and for an unknown dollar number of premiums. So that's where I hear where we are tonight.
But you tell me why it was a $2 million, single $3 million aggregate that she wanted when the town only does $1 million three?
Ron, I think Ron can answer that.
Sure. So she did not request specific numbers that I recall. I think I just wrote this while we were on the phone because those are the limits that we require other contractors to supply, like trash removal contractors and the like. I was not aware of the limits of the town's insurance for its pool operations. I imagine the pool contractor has coverage as well. Yeah, I think $1 million is too low for the pool coverage. The village probably ought to take a look at that as well.
I have to say, you know, that, once again, so we've spent 45 minutes on this of our town attorney's time, of our town manager's time, of the council's time. It's clear we don't have all the information we need. It's clear this is something that's very new for the beekeeper. And I think as other council members have stated, rushing into this to stay, for the sake of staying on schedule, just doesn't seem like a wise decision for this council. There'll be a new council next month. They can consider it for next year. Maybe by that time, the beekeeper will be able to find her own insurance. I'm also, I'm kind of surprised that we're willing to pay for a policy to insure the beekeeper. We've never done that before. And I can just, I just think that's going down a path that is not desirable for the town of Somerset. We should insure ourselves, we should insure our employees, the council is insured. But to insure outside vendors that want to work in town to pay for their policies, that just doesn't sound, that doesn't sound right to me. We spent a lot of time on this, Matt. I'm almost afraid to ask how many hours you've put into this, even though over the last several days. Jeffrey, the same for you. I think it's, I have to leave this council meeting, you know, in an hour and 15 minutes. And I wish that we would, that we would take a vote and move on to the next, to the next item on the agenda.
So I think you're calling the question, but, Council, Mr. Town Attorney, you had something to say?
Yes, real quickly, Mr. Mayor, to the extent it helps, community pools agrees to indemnify the town for claims resulting from community pools negligence. And per contract, they maintain coverage of $22 million.
Okay, thank you. So Councilmember Zuinghauser has called the question. All those in favor?
Calling the question or?
Calling the question on the motion. All those in favor?
Sorry, I'm confused on what we're voting for. Are we voting to call the question or are we voting on the motion?
Councilmember Circo's motion to approve the MOU.
Okay.
So all those in favor, I see one, two in favor. All those opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion fails two to three. The next item is public hearing motion to consider approval of a building permit application submitted by Frances G. Shepherd and Patricia Dunsmore for the construction of the deck and accessibility ramp to the house located at the property at 5410 Surrey Street. Let me see, let me see where Matt is.
I'm here. Yeah, I apologize. I actually have the applicant here. They had trouble logging in to the meeting. I'm not sure that they got the proper link. So I apologize for that.
No problem. Do you want to set them up in the office?
Yes, fortunately, I was able to get the, we have Vanessa Strunk here, who is the builder for the project. But in any case, the applicants are Frances Shepherd and Patricia Dinsmore, who own the property located at 5410 Surrey Street. And the contractor's name is Vanessa Strunk. They are, they've submitted an application to build a deck. under the existing carport to the, to the height of the existing dining room door. The deck is approximately 10 feet by 15 feet. And they're also adding an accessibility ramp under a new gable overhang. With that, I will turn it over to our building administrator, Doug, Doug Lohmeyer, for his report.
Good evening. As Matt said, they're converting the carport into a deck within a ramp for access. The county issued their building permit on April 9th. This house fronts on the circle on Surrey Street. It does not front on the main drive of Surrey Street. The house is approximately 45 feet setback from the right away line on, in the circle. The rear setback is 20 feet. The left side, which is where the carport and ramp would be located, is setback 9.25 feet from the left side property line. The lot is 10,555 square feet. And only 22% of the lot will be covered by the proposed improvements. The roof of the carport will be the same, same height that it is now, which is approximately 22, 22 feet. So that's not changing and that conforms to the town code. So I recommend the council approve the building permit for the conversion of the carport and the ramp at 5510 Surrey Street.
Okay, thank you. And I believe the applicant is here, could identify themselves and also the builder, I think, is here. So this is your opportunity to comment on the report or, and/or elaborate on your application.
Sure. Hi, I'm Vanessa Strunk. I don't, I don't really have a lot to elaborate on. It's a very simple project. The deck is really part of the accessibility issue because they'd like to step out onto the deck from the dining room door. It's only 15 inches above ground level and then walk out and have the ramp so they could go to the backyard or the front yard. And so it's very, it's a very small project. And it's just, it's basically for accessibility.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Council member Zoe Cazzer.
No questions.
Council member P L.
No questions for me.
Councilor Circo.
No questions.
Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, you prepared to make a motion?
I move that the council approve the building permit application submitted by Francis G. Shepherd and Patricia Dinsmore for the construction of a deck and accessibility ramp to the house located at the property at 5410 Surrey Street.
Is there a second? I see Zoe Cazzer. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. Congratulations. The next item, the next item is the building administrators' report. Mr. Lohmeyer.
Just a couple of things to go over tonight. At 4519 Cumberland, I have revision to my report. The permits were issued last week and the existing house has been removed or is being removed today. At 5800 Deal, we have heard back from the contractor, from the homeowner, excuse me. WSC has finally signed off on their sprinkler system, but the stair rail for the upstairs has not arrived yet. So the county has not saw, signed off on their permit, so that's still on hold. At 4917 Essex, that's still on hold also. The homeowner was trying to clarify the outstanding permit at the county. She was talking to Sandy Spring Builders and I haven't heard back about what that outcome is. So that county permit is still open. And at 5516 Trent, I've contacted the contractor to advise them that the permit will be expiring in August. And if they need an extension, they need to get that to us in July. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council, President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I have a question, not of Doug particularly, but there was a lot of traffic on the listserv about the demolition and concerns about the dust in the air and whether there was contamination from, potentially from asbestos and other things. I just want to be sure the town is on top of this and.
Matt can answer that.
Yeah, sure. I, I actually spoke to the builder over there and they had, they were using a hose today for the, the demolition that they were using today. So it should be, should be all cleared up.
Thank you. Council member Zoe Cazzer.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member P L.
I don't have any questions in particular, but I, from where I am, I could look out the window and it did seem like it was really windy recently. So I don't know if that made it worse on the day that they chose to do that work and seems like it was bad timing.
Thank you. Council member Circo.
No questions.
Thank you. Council member Barr.
It's just, I think it's probably just a typo. The one, the listing on Essex Avenue without a number, I imagine is 4712 Essex Avenue. There's no update on that, is there?
Mr. Lohmeyer, do you have it up here?
I'm sorry, could you please say that again?
Yeah, there, there's a listing without a street number on your report. It's Essex Avenue. I think it is 4712 Essex Avenue. And are you, is there any updates on it? Is all I'm asking.
47, I guess, 4712. Oh, I'm sorry. I left that address off. Yes. No, they, you all extended a permit last month and they did pour the driveway, driveway apron and they're setting the concrete. They have stabilized the front yard, but they're still planning to be completed by July as far as I know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a contract with Jesse James Creative Incorporated to replace, redesign and host the town of Somerset website for a total cost of $27,500 as recommended by the communications committee, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to recommend and echo the communication committee's unanimous recommendation of Jesse James Creative for the redesign of the town's website. They put together a budget conscious proposal for the town that had a great care, keen eye for aesthetics and communication. I listed out for you when, when we were considering what firm or persons to use to contract out for this work. The number one criteria was the approach of the proposal. Then a combination of the experience level and references of the contractor and the project manager and as well as, of course, the cost of the proposal. And I included for you a snapshot of the bid score sheet. And Jesse James Creative had the highest score. There really was only one other proposal that, that even came close. But what really put Jesse James Creative over the top, I think, for myself and for the communications committee was that they had a very individualized proposal specific to Somerset. Their marketing and aesthetic eye will serve to tie in the town's communications in a way that will make the town's website the highlight of, of all town communications and as a functioning, a well-functioning information hub for, for our residents. So the proposal comes to a total cost of $20,700. This does fall in line with the budgeted amount that we had discussed previously. $11,000 will be due this fiscal year and the remainder in FY '22 in, in several different installments based on the progress of the work.
Can you clarify that dollar amount? Because I think I said 27,500 and you said 20,700.
Yes, let me just double check and double check on that.
Okay, while you're checking, council, President Shaw, do you have any questions? You're muted.
Actually, I was just trying to think about how to pose a question. I, I cannot say I read the proposal word for, the, the response to the request for proposal word for word. But, so I relied on the communications committee, but I did love the humor, especially things like three clicks to get it to anything that was even reasonably useful. Things like that. That's the kind of stuff that drove me crazy or drives me crazy with our website. So I'm very excited that you understand that we, we need to go somewhere much better than we are. But I guess when, somebody who doesn't know very much about website creation, you said when you finish, it's going to be kind of easy for the town for at least a while, for it to be in a good state of affairs. And that it doesn't need to be updated really, really soon. Can you kind of just say a little bit about what happens after you leave?
Yep. So hi, everybody. Thanks for the, the time. So what I meant there is it is completely self-service.
Sir, can you remember to identify yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's James Torre from Jesse James Creative.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. Do you know who I am? So what I'm saying is it's, the backend of the site is self-service. So Matthew Communications, whoever needs to, you know, add stuff in real time will have the capability to, to do that. It's very simple to use. Everyone saw it. And we will be, you know, around. We're not going to finish this and walk away. So, you know, as I said in the presentation, if we see something that we think, oh, you could use a different module or do this better, we're pretty proactive on that, that front.
And then do you, do you quote us new prices for the additional things that you see that need to be done?
Yep. So a lot of times it'll just be, hey, why don't you try this? And, you know, it's just free advice. If anything comes up that we need to build something new, we will, you know, spec it out, price it for approval beforehand. And we can also discuss if it makes sense, just sort of a block of hours, just general support. About half of our clients do that in the first six months or so, and then they don't really need us. So that's all pretty flexible.
Okay, thank you. Council member Zoe Cazzer.
Yeah, I'm so thankful to the communications committee for all their hard work on this. And I look forward to a new, a new website. I, I did not read the proposal, so I'm, but I assume you've done towns with, that need similar setups to ours and that you've talked Matt through how much of his time you'll need and that he's comfortable with that. And then I guess my only other question is, Matt, I assume you've checked references?
Yes, I have. I can answer, I can answer that.
And with, with towns of similar size or did you call other municipalities? Or, or can you tell us a little bit about that, please?
Sure. They, they were other municipalities. I don't believe any were quite as small as us, but Jim can probably elaborate on this. But the company's focus has been primarily, if not entirely, on municipal websites, I think for the last 10 years or so. So they have pretty extensive municipal government experience.
Oh, terrific. Great. Thank you, Matt.
And our clients run the gamut from, I think you guys would be the smallest population wise, but we, to Matt's point earlier, this idea of branding in places that are special is really where we live. But we've got clients from villages up to Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, which is 2.5 million people, so.
Great. Perfect. Thank you so much. No, no other questions.
Thank you. Council member P L.
I just wanted to follow up on a few websites that you would want to link to and just make sure that those are things that you've anticipated. One of them being general code for our legislative framework, where we have our code and our charter and various different regulations. And, and mention, make sure, make sure that you're looking at that. And then the other two would be the software that the swimming pool has been putting into place. And I would hope that it would be really easy to go into that from the website. And likewise, the tennis court reservation system, which is a different website. And hope that all of those would be so easy. I don't know whether there's any possibility of any kind of app or any kind of proposal for things like town Twitter or things like that. But I would be interested to hear what comes out of, you know, the website development and hope to make it as user friendly as possible, especially for the younger people in our town. Because, you know, we've talked in the past about Venmo being used for different things. And certainly, you know, people want to be able to make as many moves as possible from their smartphones. I'm sure you're well ahead of me on all of that stuff, but I just thought I'd bring it up.
No, it's good. And the third party stuff, we are aware of those. And we can either link out to them or we can, depending on their code, embed them in what's called an iframe. But our goal is to make those sort of knee jerks of, oh, I clicked this and suddenly you're on another planet. We can at minimum have a warning, you know, you're about to leave the town website to go to pool registration. Are you aware, continue. So pretty sensitive to that.
Is that it? Is that it, council? Thank you. Council member, Councilor Circo, do you have any questions?
No, I'm excited about this, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
Yeah, I participated in the review of proposals and I have to say that the Jesse James proposal really stood out as, as best, simply put. Our town website is probably at least two generations behind. And two of the big improvements, I'm going to talk about them very quickly. One is that websites now have editors in place so that you can really write in English on, on it. And that then translates it automatically to, to the website, which means in turn that we can distribute the load of improving the website to like the committee chairs when they're posting minutes. They can do it themselves with this system now. And then there's just a very little review after that to be posted. And that, that is going to save a lot of time for Matt. The other piece of it that will also save time is that there is a tagging now that takes place whereby very often when you have an item on a website, it's on multiple pages on a website. So it's not just on one page, it's on several pages, which creates a problem when you're updating it because you've got to run to all those pages to update it. But now with the tagging systems in place, as long as you've got it appropriately marked, once you update it one place, it will get updated everywhere. Again, that saves a lot of time for Matt. So it is going to be a much better website. It is also going to be much less demanding of Matt's time.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments from our residents or guests?
Yes, we had one resident who wished to make a comment or question, Kabir Kumar.
Thanks, Matt. I have just a few clarifying questions. Can everyone hear me? Just do a thumbs up. In the Town Journal, there were some amounts listed, highlighted in terms of the website update. There was a $15,000 amount budgeted in the previous year and then another $25,000 amount for the budget this year. I just wanted to clarify what of those amounts and how do they reconcile with this? I'll just run through my questions, Matt. They're all for you.
Yeah, sure. So the, the, we had sort of overshot in not, A, not really knowing what the total cost would be, but also to give ourselves a buffer. So we budgeted 15,000 for this year. We'll spend 11,000. And then I think, as you said, we have 25,000 set aside for next year. And that'll come to 20,700 when we factor in hosting as well as the actual redesign itself.
You mean 27,500?
20,700 next year.
Next year, okay.
That's where that came from, yeah.
I got it, got it, got it. The second question. The second question, you mentioned there was a second proposal. Maybe James can can cover his ears when we talk about that, but there was a second proposal. And you it I glanced at the scoring sheet and it was pretty close. But there was a notable price difference. I'm wondering if you could speak a bit about why that proposal was came so close, but was short a point, but there was an honorable price difference between proposal one and two. And maybe say a bit about the price difference as well.
Yeah, sure. So, um, yeah, that certainly. So the the other proposal that I had referenced before was revise, which, when I was doing my my rubrics, which which I included for the council, did did come in close. And one of the primary drivers was the cost. Because whereas this proposal, I think I I was grading it based on the the four, the four years, assuming we we make the investment in this website and it lasts about four years before we have to do a new, a new one. And so for that, the four year sum for Jesse James was going to be thirty nine thousand five hundred, whereas revised, it was twenty nine thousand five hundred seventy. And so
And and the design difference was also roughly the same, ten, twelve thousand?
Yeah, yeah, the the, yeah, the 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 difference in that was the initial design investment. So the 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 hosting cost was basically break even. The difference was the initial cost.
Because the second proposal had a very high rating from you. I didn't look closely at your reading rubric, but was ten to twelve thousand dollars cheaper on redesign. So it struck me as notable. And so I don't know all the details and all that's gone behind this, but it struck me as notable that that came pretty close, but was significantly or notably cheaper. Then two last two questions, Mayor. Sorry to take up a little bit of time. How long will the redesign process take? Just to be absolutely clear, when will the new website come online and be accessible by town residents?
Maybe, maybe Jim, you can you can speak to that. Part of it I know will be based on us scheduling our our sit downs and things like that.
Yeah, generally, the range, you know, if the town is engaged and we're getting the answers that we need in a timely fashion, which I'm sure we will, is anywhere between sixteen to twenty two weeks. And honestly, oftentimes, it sort of stalls, we're good to go. And then you guys have a small thing working for you, I think. But in bigger municipalities, oftentimes, four departments will just stop coming to meetings and then, yeah, it creates a problem.
So within six months, the site will be up. Okay. And then you mentioned that we would be the smallest. So maybe I can, I don't know if I can address James directly, but so I'll address. But we we are, we are the smallest. Oh, I can. Okay, we are the smallest population. You know, you mentioned Allegheny County. What would have been roughly, you don't have to give us the specific, but the price range that you might have charged in Allegheny County for a website redesign?
Um, about, I think where that number is. Probably about eight times the budget we're talking about here. But that is a significant, significantly bigger, you know, beast in terms of, you know, departments and public information officers and all that.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there further comments or questions, Mr. Town Manager?
There was a question from Kumar Vaswani, who just wanted to double check and make sure that we will make sure the previous editions of the Town Journal available on the town website. And I think I can answer in the affirmative on that one, Kumar. Yes, we will make sure that they are available on the new new website.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions, Council, you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve the contract with Jesse James Creative Inc. to replace redesign and host the town of Somerset website for a total cost of twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars, as recommended by the communications committee.
Is there a second? I saw Barr first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Next item, public hearing motion to consider the purchase of plants and the approval of rain garden and green space design plans as submitted by Kelly Oakleyson, founder and director of Groundsmith Collective Landscaping Services, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, we discussed this at the last council work session. So I don't think I need to set the table too much, other than just to turn it over to Kelly, who is joining us today.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kelly Oakleyson, and I am the owner and principal of Groundsmith Collective, who has been hired by the wonderful town to support moving forward with more sustainable landscape plans. So I'm here specifically to talk about the spring and early summer installation at a couple of key sites along the within the town. I believe Matthew might have shared, Matthew, have you shared this document with everybody?
Yes, but yeah, but yeah. Yeah.
Okay, cool. I'll just do a brief recap. So there are three general geographic areas that our firm is looking at. And this was the plan that we put together for the spring. The strategy of removing invasive plants, which would be focusing on tier two invasive, such as Nandina domestica, butterfly bush, plants like that, are also barberry, which is Berberis. There's a couple of them in town. The other strategy is to do existing garden infill, which just means essentially creating better bed density in town gardens. And then we also highlighted areas that could and should be completely redesigned. So this package was presented. And so this is just kind of a brief overview of some of the things that were noticed while being a site visit early this spring. So these Nandina domestica are considered tier two. So this document just kind of goes through with some illustrative photos to explain what bed density means. Like, this is the garden by the basketball court. You want good bed density. You don't want to have a lot of mulch gaps. Because good bed density reduces week, reduces time and helps with water infiltration. So so we've all have already gone through this. And after we, after you all heard Matthew talk about this, both him and I had a conversation. And it sounded like there was a desire to focus on two key areas within the town. The first area is the pool. So this is a rain garden that's just adjacent to the parking lot. Just before you go over the bridge to the pool, so it's existing rain garden. So we're proposing some infill. So that means adding more perennials and perennial ground covers to this bed. And we also have identified the landscaping bed that is just next to the parking spaces, which has crepe myrtles and a few, a few other plants. So we're suggesting that this is completely redesigned using ninety percent natives or more if possible. And another area that was identified is the front entrance beds of a Dorset. So we're not talking about the mature trees behind the the gateway stone, beautiful stone piers. We're just talking about really everything in front. So the old boxwoods and some of the other perennials. So I've been talking to Matt and we, because I am, I know the industry really well, and I have been paying attention for the last few months. There is going to be a plant shortage, and there already is. So I took it upon myself to procure plants and play, you know, place a hold on some plants through North Creek Nursery. North Creek Nursery, they specialize in plugs. And essentially, plugs are, they're small plants. You get them in flats. A flat is basically either for North Creek, either thirty two plants, all the way up to seventy two. And it is the most cost effective, efficient way to plant perennial plants. Only professionals can access this kind of material. It is wholesale only. So I started a list of plants that I held, and they're all native. They are mostly shade and deer tolerant. So I have collected this list and added pricing so that Matt and I could continue the conversation about, you know, the budget from the town. And that is where we are currently. So we're we're wrapping up some concept plans for those two areas. With the cicadas coming, I my best professional recommendation is to probably wait until they come and go before we plant any woody plants, which means shrubs or trees. Because they are going to be most susceptible, but I'm going to really leave that up to probably the council decide if if we want to engage with some problems. And maybe in June, they're going to have to be watered more. But this list right here is all perennials. So they're not woody plants. I I did a, I listened to a talk with Mike Ralph, who is one of our leading entomologists at the University of Maryland, and he was just saying that cicadas are going to higher risk to woody plants and woody shrubs and trees that are freshly planted, which means that they're stressed because they were just planted. And if they are stressed and they get nibbled on by cicada babies, you know, it could put them under extreme stress, which you might lose them. So it's a risk, but the perennials would be completely fine. They just need to be watered. I hope I hope I covered that, you guys. And the and we're going to be filling this out a little bit more, but these are in that package that was presented last week. All the plants that are in this really lovely spreadsheet that I just showed you are all here with beautiful visual guides who for folks who are more visual. So and here's some stats with all of them as well, like what their colors, what what they're presenting at different times of the year. The the garden entrance to Dorset, garden entrance to Dorset has more of a sun opportunity. But the the gardens that are by the pool are quite a bit more shady. So there's just different, different light conditions. So different species will be better for different areas.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Okay. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I really appreciate your dedication and your commitment to sustainable gardening. But I kind of wanted to talk a little bit about the order of the plantings. In part, this contract was motivated by the fact that there were some things our staff didn't really have the training and expertise to do. And I know that you've been working with them on a number of things. One of the areas that I really had hoped we could focus on, especially now as the pool is going to be opening this Saturday, is a rain garden at the pool where the staff, I mean, every time I walk by it, I'm I'm ready to weep because it's been so neglected. It needs to be dredged out. And the plants have, by and large, died out over time. So I was really hopeful that that area could be improved before the pool got a lot of use. And then the other thing, I thought I read somewhere in your material that you were looking at the other end of the parking lot where the bio retention pond is. And maybe putting some rocks in to slow the flow of water. That area was never professionally planted. And I I had hopes that, again, that would be another area where you could help us figure out how to make it functional, attractive, and how the staff could be better prepared to take care of it because it's been totally neglected.
Totally. Just to make sure I'm I'm understanding the areas, money. The rain garden, the first rain garden you mentioned, is that is that the one that I'm identifying here?
That's that one. But it's not, it it needs more than just plantings. It's it's kind of gotten filled in because it gets a lot of runoff over the years. I don't think it's been actually had soil removed in several years. And so it's it's quite, it's it's quite a bit more shallow than it was in the beginning.
Okay, so so when we were on site and we inspected, so we we kind of dug around a little bit to see what was happening. And I'm sure that there has been some what we call siltation from runoff. And the really tricky thing is that the, there's a, I think there's a birch tree that's right over here and pretty much the entire base of that rain garden is full of root mat. So you, it's not just like, you know, six inches of soil is just, you know, fresh. Like, there's actually like a whole, you know, profile of roots that are existing and thriving in that rain garden, which is a good thing because that means that, like, the that tree is holding the soil from, you know, entering your your local stream. But, you know, there there is, there is zero ground cover layer. I mean, I think there's, there's a few Christmas ferns in here, but there's no ground cover layer. So that's what we're suggesting is is adding a ground cover layer of caraxias in different plants like that. You certainly can decorate it with some boulders. Boulders are great because they, nothing can grow underneath of them. So they do suppress weeds. So you can do some some boulder decorating. I think kids would enjoy sitting on them. So there's a couple of things you can do, but in terms of like excavating soil, I looked at the dome grate that is here, and that's supposed to, you know, be there for like overflow during really major storm events. And it's still, you know, present and doing its thing. I mean, the only, you know, you really can't do much about that. The the depth of it is is what it is. And if you have mature trees that are growing in this that are taking up that root area, I can't really, excavating would not be the proper thing to do.
So probably what happened is as it filled in, then the roots spilled into the soil.
Yep, exactly. That's exactly what happened. So you're kind of in a position now where I I probably would say just plant it densely because, yeah, I think that you would do adverse harm to the trees that are doing their job. So I'm not super concerned about this one. I think this one could be definitely beautified, but I think that and maybe we could, you know, raise the berm a little bit over here to try to give a little bit more area black water, but it's draining. The other one that is in the opposite side of the parking lot is one that concerns me greatly because it is not draining. And essentially, it is a wet pond. And I I don't know quite the history of that garden, but it is not draining and the plants that are inappropriate. So it it needs to be probably completely reengineered. I, you know, if it was designed to be able to hold water for twenty four hours, it's holding it for way more than that. And I visited on a couple of occasions and that's that's sort of an area that I think needs some attention if it's supposed to be functioning.
But that's not in your plan at all?
Well, it's it's kind of, I think that you actually will need an engineer to, I mean, I don't, I don't know who did the original design for that garden, but I I would, it would seem to be that the garden's not supposed to be a wet pond. I think it's was probably supposed to drain within thirty six hours, but most of the visits that I've been on and I've looked at it, it's had sitting water, which, you know, breeds mosquitoes. And it looks like there's been, you know, plant donations that have that have popped in there. So, you know, a wet pond is a completely different environment than a rain garden. Rain gardens need to be able to drain within thirty six hours. That pond is always wet. So that's, that was actually a question that I talked to Matt about before that that's probably not supposed to be a wet pond. I don't know if it was designed and engineered by someone before, but it needs to be looked at. And that's a little bit beyond my scope because I don't have, you know, I I didn't, I don't have that background of of civil engineering and and, you know. you know, I, I didn't, I don't have that background of, of civil engineering and, and, you know.
I thought we kind of put that in the original scope of work, that area, no?
We can, I mean, we can, I mean, what, what I can do, so if it's, I, we have identified that area as to be, it's, so it's been called a rain garden. But it's not a rain garden because the wet pond. So it's not functioning and which means that it probably needs to be re-engineered, which is a, you know, that those need engineering drawings and that, that is beyond the scope of, we're basically giving you sustainable maintenance advice and we're providing plants that would be appropriate for various areas around the town. That is an area that we would not make recommendations for because as it is now, it is not functioning. So to give suggestions on what to plant in something that's not functioning would not be appropriate. It needs to be it needs to be addressed to see if it's supposed to be a rain garden. If it is, we could easily give, I mean, we can give recommendations for wet pond or a rain garden, but I don't think it's supposed to be a wet pond. So that's our recommendation is that it needs to be looked at because it's probably not functioning with, with its original intent, but I never saw any plans, the original plans, but it's holding water.
Thank you. I'll see if I can find any original plans.
Because, you know, most, most plants can't sit in water. That's basically a completely different category of plants. Like they, a lot of plants can't have, they need oxygen. And so when you have a wet pond, you need to have plants that are aquatic.
Actually, it's dry a lot of the time too. So just plain old aquatic plants probably wouldn't survive.
Well, no. Well, I mean, I've been to the town probably like eight to ten times now, and every time I've been by and it hasn't been a rainy day, it's had at the base of the pond where it's the lowest point, it always has water. So that's why I'm bringing it up because it, that shouldn't be, that it should not be, it should not hold any water. So, yeah, yeah.
Do you have any further questions, Council President Shaw? Thank you. Council Member Zoe Gasser.
Yeah, Kelly, I'm not a gardener and I just have one question. You talked about the plugs, that those were the kind of plants that you were going to use?
Yes.
Do they survive, survive easily or more easily than other sized plants that you, that you might plant?
Sure. Yes, their survival rate is better. They're a fraction of the cost. So in that spreadsheet, let's see.
I guess, I guess my concern is, you know, watering around everywhere in town is more difficult than one watering their own garden. Right? Because water isn't accessible everywhere in town. I just want to make sure that those kinds of plants will be able, that our staff will be able to water them enough for them to be able to survive.
Yeah, they, they are the most economical, most sustainable approach to doing mass plantings. Yeah. And I, I think, you know, Matt and I are talking about their approach. I think that we should probably just focus on really specific areas and just make those the areas that, you know, where these plantings go so that it's, they're not running all around town and that water is accessible.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Peel.
I don't really have any questions about the plants or, or the choices, but I guess I just wondered for the benefit of the incoming council members and maybe just so people have a sense in their mind. Have you sort of prioritized those three areas in town in terms of which one needs to be addressed first and second and third and so on? Or is that something you could do?
Yeah, that's a great question. I can speak to the internal conversations that I've had with Matt. So we have a list of all of the town sites and so it's, it's really up to, I think, the council to determine which sites are a priority if, if the sites that we've mentioned today aren't. I think that the town entrance was listed as a priority because that's a gateway to the town. Everybody sees it. The boxwoods there are past their prime and I think have been affected by the boxwood blight. So we, we sort of flagged that one as a, as a pretty prime area. And then the pool. The town hall has tons of opportunity as well. I mean, there's a lot of non-native up there and like, so really the pool areas and the main entrance, but you know, that, this is kind of an open discussion and I think we do have a spreadsheet of the sites and we can share that with you all so you can internally rank them beyond this conversation or to continue this conversation. It's really up to you all.
I guess that's what I also meant. In addition to the town prioritizing them was just what your advice was in terms of which needed the earliest attention, if there's a way to look at it like that.
Yeah. So no, I mean, I think that, you know, just like our, our proposal for the spring, it's like you want to densify, you want to get rid of the invasives and you just want to make sure that you're, you're maintaining the existing gardens that you have. So I didn't really, I did notice a couple of invasives, we were putting in the report, like lesser salendine, which I'm sure you all are aware, but we've identified sites where we noticed like spring invasives that we can keep up on the maintenance teams top of their mind when they're going around. But yeah, in the pool, not the pool, the, the the tennis courts, that linear garden is beautiful. We're also going to mention a bunch of areas that are a great opportunity to do more. But in terms of like priority, we were thinking of visibility, visibility and not only visibility, but also just like bare soil. So the, the, you know, the rain garden and that linear garden that's adjacent to the parking lot and the pool, it's just mold. It's not, there's no planting. There's, so basically in terms of stormwater management, there's no friction for runoff. So, you know, it's just hovering bare areas, making them pretty. Thank you. That's all. Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Serko. Do you have questions?
Sorry, I'm good. I just accidentally pushed the wrong button. No questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bar.
Yeah, first of all, thanks very much, Kelly, for the education. I appreciate it. The, the, the other priority that we discussed at our last meeting is the mandinas in front of the town hall because they are poisonous to birds. So if there's some way we can also have that dealt with early, I'd appreciate it.
I think the biggest conversation, and this is, this is like just a very kind of human experience is like, once you start taking things out, you want to have a transition, have something put in because, you know, it's going to be more obvious if something's gone. So what, what I can do with Matthew is we can kind of strategize the removal and replacement and put some, put some appropriate shrubs in. It's just the cicadas. It's just that timing, getting that timing right. Yeah, but the town hall is a great, is a great location to invest in doing some, you know, some redesign work.
Is that, is that it, Councilmember?
That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated a wish to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, you prepared to make a motion?
Right, but it's not clear to me exactly what we would be. We don't have dollar figures. I mean, I can move that we approve the recommended purchase of plants and approval of rain garden and green space design plans as submitted by Kelly Oakleyson. But do we need more specifics, Matt?
Mr. Town Attorney, is that technically sufficient?
Well, Matt has put up on the screen a proposed inventory with dollar figures. So if the council wanted, it could adopt this specific inventory.
Is that everything?
Yeah, at the time when I printed off the agenda, I, we didn't have the total cost quite ready yet. So what you're seeing in front of you though is what we've, what we've worked it out to.
So could I amend my motion to say?
You can add to it because it has been seconded yet.
The purchase of plants up to six, fifty-eight hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think I saw Zoe Gasser first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? At the request of Councilmembers Peel and Zoe Gasser, I am now calling item number nine, a public hearing motion to adopt the FY twenty twenty-two budget and tax rates. I did want to ask the council members, I know, I realize you have a, some time challenges. Did you wish to, before, I thought what we would do is we would have Matt briefly present the budget, comments by the budget chair, then questions, then the public hearing part and then a decision. But did you wish to, what is your pleasure?
It's item ten, Jeffrey.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one. Thank you. Item ten. What is your pleasure, Councilmember Peel?
I, I just was asking for this to be brought up so that both Barbara and I would have an opportunity to vote on it before the meeting ended. And I guess we also have a code ordinance on the agenda and I just wondered if we could also bring that forward.
But it's eight, but I thought you both needed to leave.
I don't have a specific time that I need to leave by, but I need to keep things moving. I'm
Okay, Councilmember Zoe Gasser, what's your pleasure?
I, I'd like to move forward with the, well, either one of those is fine with me.
But are you, are you, are you able to stay for this whole item or did you want to give your comments now?
No, I'll, I'll stay for the whole item. Well, I'm hoping that we can move quickly through it.
Okay, okay. Well, I wanted to explain what the process was to give you the option.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Town Manager, I'm not going to read the amendments. Mr. Town Manager, could you please briefly present the budget and briefly present the amendments? And then I would like to ask the budget chair to briefly add anything he needs to add from all the other meetings we've had, and then we will take questions from the council. Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussions about the budget. It's been publicized for, for folks to, to look at and comment on. So I won't take up too much time. I'll just focus on the three amendments to the budgets. Two of them are from committees that met after the time the budget was introduced. One is from the Stormwater Study Committee who asked that ten thousand dollars be added to the environmental line so that they might do stormwater education activities as a result of their studies. The other is that five thousand dollars be added to town maintenance, and that was requested by the History and Archives Committee for preservation, specifically scanning of old documents such as town journals going back to the incorporation of Somerset agendas, going back to the incorporation of Somerset that are in many cases bound in actual physical books, so need specialized scanning as opposed to just going through a regular scanner. And then the final, the final amendment is not going to change the, the bottom line, but it's basically just delaying the discussion we had had about contracting out some of the gardening and landscaping work in the town. Enrique informed me that he is at the town's pleasure, happy to continue on and would like to continue his role with the town through the month of November. And so I, I value Enrique's experience and, and hard work in the town and would be happy to have him for as long as he is willing and able to work for the town. And so I'm basically just suggesting that those July, August, September, October notes, so those five months, instead of contracting out the work, we continue to have Enrique be our, our lead foreman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, Budget Committee Chair, Phil Young. Is, is he here or is, is? There you are. Thank you for joining us tonight. Is there anything you would like to add briefly?
First, I would just like to thank the council members for all the time they've committed to listening to all our budget discussions. I know we had a couple of extra working sessions and I know how busy everybody is. So first, let me thank you for that. Thanks, of course, to, to Marnie and Robin for all their, all their help in liaising. And also, of course, thanks to, to John Medalia and Bolton Kelly, Kelly Bolton, for their work. I think that the council is looking at a, a very fiscally conservative and cautious budget. We have the rainy day fund. We have a substantial cushion in the unencumbered reserves so that even if our forecast for income tax revenues does tend to be optimistic, turn out to be optimistic, we have a cushion there. There's a couple of pieces of good news that I've already shared with the council and that's on property taxes where we're hoping to get an additional fifty-three thousand in May because they were late in billing the public utilities. We haven't received that yet, so we hadn't put that number in the budget yet. And I have a question, I'm afraid, with regard to the tables. Because I don't, and Matt, maybe you can clarify. The, the, I don't recognize the property tax figure that we have in there right now for FY twenty-two. And so I, I, I just want to bring that to your attention. If you're approving
Let's let Matt clarify that.
The so the, the property tax that's proposed in FY twenty-two was the same prop, the same property tax that we have this year. So it's ten cents per one, ten cents per one, for a hundred dollars of accessible value. And
It's, it's the dollar figure I don't recognize, Matt. The total dollars, the six, in the table that I guess that the council has, let me look at that. It's let me go to the top of that table, sorry. It's six hundred and six, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Whereas when we were looking at those numbers, it was closer to six hundred thousand. So I'm just not quite sure where that additional money came in. And I know, because, because we haven't incorporated the, the good news yet, since we haven't received that money.
So do you think that the FY twenty-one is incorrect in this as well? Is that what?
Well, let me take a look at the FY twenty-one. The FY twenty-one, yeah, that one is also high because you have six hundred and fifty-seven thousand there. And we were looking at five hundred and ninety-two thousand when we discussed the budget on April thirteenth at the working session. So I'm not quite sure how that number got in there. I guess the growth is probably okay. But I think the FY twenty-one base is the problem.
So, so Phil, you're suggesting that the council needs to amend those numbers?
Yeah, I think so. From, from what I see now, unless there's some other reason that I'm, I'm not aware of, I, I think we may need to amend those numbers.
So I think you're, you're referencing, I think, an updated numbers from a, a budget session from April fifteenth. Is that what you said?
April thirteenth, when the council had the, the working session.
So the, but this is based on the, the budget that was introduced at the April fifth council meeting. So I think that's why. We, we did not, we have not updated those numbers since it was introduced. So I think that's why we did not, we have not updated those numbers since it was introduced at the April fifth meeting.
Okay.
See, they have to be, see, we discussed this at our managers' meeting. So the introduced a budget is what was published. And so if anything changed in in work session since then, it has to be amended formally by the council. Okay, you can't, it can't be amended in a budget session.
Right, right.
So 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 I think please be, please give the council the correct numbers that they're going to need to amend tonight.
Okay. In that case, I would amend the property tax number to be six hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars for the property tax in FY twenty-two.
Okay, and is there another number? Because this way we can, then I can take questions on these numbers.
Well, and that, of course, will will have a direct effect on unencumbered reserves, lowering them by the difference between what's there now, which is six sixty-seven. So they'll reduce unencumbered reserves by about sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Well, you need to be, when it comes time to the amendments, it needs to be specific. But are those the only two changes that you're recommending tonight?
Yes, that's what I I see for now. The other differences we have are fairly small, although if if these were based on on the April fifth discussion, I would prefer to base them on what we talked about on April thirteenth, which was more up to date.
Well, well, I'm sure that Council President Shaw will ask you, what are the specific numbers? But do you have anything else to add on commenting on the Matt's presentation?
No, I mean, the major difference was there on the property tax. Otherwise, I think everything else is generally okay.
Okay.
We have to work on the specifics.
I'm sure that Council President Shaw will pin you down with the specifics, and I will now call on her.
Okay.
I just have one one question, which is Matt, the Environment Committee for ten thousand dollars. You've just listed as a stormwater education in in the chair's memo. She says it's to hire consultants.
Yeah, I was sort of vague on it because there there wasn't a lot of there wasn't a lot of information about specifically how the consultants would be used. I
The stormwater meeting, they talked about developing a plan based on the results of the survey, I think.
They don't. Right, which is part of it. My understanding was was having them lead education efforts for town and answering questions for town residents.
They name, she named some consultants to help them develop a plan.
They're, they're, I believe they are going to be asking for proposals to be submitted. So that's why they gave that number of ten thousand.
I'm not, I'm not asking about the number. I'm just saying, what's the purpose of the ten thousand dollars? And I thought it was to hire consultants to help them to figure out next steps.
Yes, that's correct.
Not so much for providing educational.
That that's correct.
That's my only question.
Okay, thank you. Did you want, did you want to ask the for the specific figures? So when you make your amendment and those lines?
Well, I think that, so I heard Phil say six hundred thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars for the FY twenty-two property tax. If we make these other amendments, if those are also approved, all of that will affect the reserves, and so that will have to get adjusted. But I'm not, that can be done as a result of these changes rather than having to amend that number, I think.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zoig Hauser.
Yeah, Matt, should we approve of the ten thousand dollars for stormwater and the five thousand dollars for the history and archives? Can you tell us where that money would come from? And because I know that the, you know, and and I guess if the Budget Committee feels that that's, if this is an appropriate year for those expenses, maybe maybe Phil could speak to that, because my understanding is what we've been hearing all along from Robin, Steve, and the Budget Committee is that there that funds are going to be very tight. So if one of you could speak to that and where the money would come from, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So typically, what we've done in the past is when there is a budget amendment during the year, we try to balance that out by either taking it from the budget contingency or a line item that doesn't have as much money. In this case, because it's not an adopted budget yet, it does not require a supermajority amendment, so it doesn't require us to to take money from somewhere else in order to to pay for these additional expenses. This would just be an additional expense added to our budget.
Maybe I. Which by implication means the reserves will be lower than they would have otherwise.
Correct.
Right, that was, that was my point, and I just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with that for this year, given the conditions, given the fact that we decided not to do our roads, given the fact that we're looking at the street lighting, and and given the fact of the age of our pools, is that I just want to make sure that all council members are comfortable with doing with pulling money for these other things that maybe we should put off as we decided to put off the road. That's that's just a question.
I guess what I would just point out in terms of the numbers is what we're looking at with the additional fifteen thousand dollars that Matt has already mentioned, the ten thousand, the two amendments to expenditures, right, the ten and the five thousand? So that's an additional fifteen. And then if we lower the property taxes by sixty-seven, that means we have to lower the unencumbered reserves by eighty-two thousand dollars. Right now, in the table that I have in front of me, we had four hundred and eleven thousand, Matt, for unencumbered reserves, and we'd be lowering that by about eighty, so you'd be at about three hundred and thirty thousand plus or minus, which is and we're still protecting the rainy day fund. So that we're not changing that target. So I think I think you're still okay in terms of that. And keep in mind that we have not yet incorporated the fifty-three thousand that we're supposed to get for property taxes. So that would, if that comes in in May, then that'll that'll help us. And we also haven't even talked about the grants from the government.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel.
I don't have any questions. I support both of the amendments that Matt proposed.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Circa.
I support the proposed amendments, too.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, no questions.
Thank you, Councilor Barr. Do you have any questions?
Two questions, two points. Matt, I know there was discussion in the History and Archives Committee about it being nine thousand rather than five thousand for the request for maintenance of the files, particularly scanning of the very frail documents from way back. Does that get changed back to five thousand? Do you know?
We have it, that this five thousand brings us up to that nine thousand.
Thank you. All right. The other, the other point is that Barbara, of course, this is for the FY twenty-two budget, not the FY twenty-one budget. But and all we're doing here is is saying that, in essence, if there are sufficient funds in FY twenty-two for these activities, then we have budgeted for them. Therefore, we can vote for them directly without having to go.
I understand that, Robin. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Barr, do you have any other questions?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager. Did you have a question?
Question, Jeffrey. Matt, you need to have the money moved in the personnel area you mentioned because Enrique is going to stay on longer. It's a wash. It doesn't, I mean, it it doesn't reduce the available funds, but you need that amendment as well.
Yes, I didn't have time when I printed off that for you, but I've updated the the agenda to include that. So I'm, I can read you what my, what my recommendation was for that, if that's helpful to you.
Yes.
Sure. So so that was to transfer twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars from line six sixty-two, one oh one, garden supervisor to sixty-one, two oh three, sixty-one, three hundred, and sixty-one, seven hundred.
Is that your only question, Council President Shaw?
I don't think I got the line for the first one, though. Sixty, sixty.
Here, what I'll do is I'll put it in the in the chat.
Two, one oh one. Did you have any other questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments from our residents or guests?
Yes, two residents have indicated that they wish to make a comment. The first is Paige Whitley.
Who's a member of the History and Archives Committee?
Yes, and on behalf of the History and Archives Committee, I want to thank the council members and the mayor for their support and Matt Tullinger for helping us with this and our liaison, Robin Barr. This is a one-off to deal with aging, crumbling historic documents that just need this done for preservation for the future. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Who's next, Mr.?
Next, we have Kabir Kumar.
I have a proposal for the council. And it might, hopefully, don't, doesn't take us into a rabbit hole discussion.
Well, you could, this is your opportunity to make a comment, and then if someone wants to amend it, but this is your opportunity to have a discussion.
Yes, okay. So the the comment is, you know, I have suggestions for what we might want to consider including in the budget that's missing right now. One is, I think we should probably earmark, or I would recommend the council earmark more for stormwater in the coming year. My impression is that there's been great work by this committee. You know, the survey shows very widespread interest in action from the town government on this matter. As Robin explained, Councilmember Barr explained, earmarking now doesn't mean we are, you're going to likely, we're going to spend it, but you're marking it, and it would make it easier, I think, for the mayor and the town manager to act on it. So I would, I would encourage us, you're marking a higher amount for this because of the momentum behind this work. And of course, more rainfall over the summer is going to create more momentum behind this work. So I think it's worth that that would be one suggestion. The other suggestion is, I don't see, I'm not sure if the budget includes the pool operating hours being extended in October and in May of next year. And, you know, I did a small survey, about hundred and twenty residents.
Hold on a second.
Yes.
Let's get that question answered by the Town Manager.
In terms of the the stormwater?
No, no, no.
No, the pool.
Oh, yeah.
He had a question about the pool.
That's right.
Extrapolated from the numbers, but I believe they are not in there.
Yes, that's right. So the the numbers are based on the current contract we have with them, which is the week before Memorial Day through the month of September.
And again, I'm just making this, you know, looking ahead, given what we just went through on on extending operating hours in May. And I just wanted to provide some data on that. I surveyed about hundred and twenty families, sixty-four of them responded. This is my survey informal, just for me to get a handle on what what are the priorities for people in town, a subset of people in town. And the vast majority of them, you know, had a clear view on what is the role of town government, which is to provide essential services. And the vast majority of them felt the pool was one of the most important essential services. So and I, you know, frankly, I think it would be a pity if again in October, then again next May, we are rallying eight-year-olds and seven-year-olds and five-year-olds to prepare videos and write letters, as much as my children would love to do that. You know, knowing that this is important for the town, it might be sensible to budget for it now.
So is it, but is there a dollar amount that you're recommending?
Again, I will, I will base it on my observation from attending previous council meetings. I don't have the exact figure. Matt's app would know it, but I believe it's seven K a week. So if it is, you know, at least for the extending it in May, it would be another fourteen K. I don't know what it would be in extending in October. So.
Maybe, maybe Matt could attach a dollar amount just so the council knows in case someone wants to amend it. Do you have any idea what the dollar amount that Mr. Kumar, future council member Kumar?
So those are, while Matt, you're pulling up those numbers, and in the interest of time, I know Barbara has time, less time, and plenty of this time. So one is these two things I would recommend we add, and two is I would reconsider some things. And Paige Whitley will probably not be pleased for me to say this, but I do think some things don't seem to be, you know, the the things we may want to consider this year, given everything that's going on. I would put the archives dollar amount in that category. I would question line ninety-one, which is the garden supervisor, just seems to be a new hire. I would question line one one nine, which is a project consultant, thirty K. It seems to be a new hire. And I would question line ninety-three, which is, I think, two thousand four hundred, two thousand five hundred K. If we were to reconsider those, these are all very important, but reconsider those for this year, then I think we would be able to make the kinds of additions that I'm suggesting, which are in the interest of the town, both on stormwater and pool operating hours. Those are my suggestions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, did anyone else wish to speak?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I'll start, and Matt, if I, if you, if I need some help, let me know. So I move the adoption of the proposed FY twenty-two budget with the tax rates we've talked about. Do I need to specify them? The ten cents per one hundred assessed value for and one dollar for a hundred personal property with the following amendments. Add ten thousand dollars to line six two nine oh two for stormwater, a stormwater program. Five thousand to line six seven one oh two, town maintenance for history and archives records, and transfer money twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars from line six two one oh one to three different line items, six one two oh three, six one three zero zero and six one seven oh oh. And Matt, you'll have to to specify the exact split for those.
Yes, sure. So it it was nineteen thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents to Public Works Regular, one thousand, five hundred sixty dollars to Retirement Contribution, and one thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents for FICA, Medicare, and unemployment insurance.
So another amendment, which is to the property tax line item to reduce that to five hundred and ninety, I'm sorry, to six hundred thousand dollars, nine, six hundred thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. That is line eight in the FY twenty-two budget.
Okay.
Did I get all the amendments?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ten Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there a second? I see Councilor Peel seconded. Okay, now discussion. Would anyone like to discuss the motion?
Yes, I would. I would like to talk about the question of adding money to the pool budget for staying open through the end of October. I'd like to discuss it. And I would also like to discuss adding more money to, or I would like to discuss whether or not we have any sense yet as to whether any of the federal money coming in under the rescue plan would be able to be used for stormwater infrastructure changes in the town. So I guess.
I can try and answer the second question, Franny. The, the two purposes for the American Rescue Plan are to help cities, towns, and villages recover from the budgetary problems that were caused by the COVID pandemic. And the second is really around public health, such as vaccinations and those kinds of things. But there's been a lot of lobbying by cities, towns, and villages to add other purposes, and one of, one of them has been around stormwater. Water and sewer, water for sure is under the current American Rescue Plan, but I think it's for improving drinking water to get, to remove all the lead pipes. Because there's still people who have pipes with lead in them. So it's to do that. But there's a lot of push to see if stormwater can be included, but right now, you know, we'll know in about 10 days or less.
I see. Um, okay, and then, well, that's helpful. And then the, I, I see that Matt Zap has mentioned in the comments that the pool committee had unanimously recommended extending the season until the end of October, roughly $29,000. And while I'm not sure that I would agree with the $29,000 through the end of October, personally, I would be interested in finding out if anybody would be willing to end it through some period of, in October.
Well, you're discussing the budget, so.
Whether or not to raise the amount of money for the pool, right? Isn't that a budget discussion?
But is that contained in, I don't know if that's contained.
Are we only discussing the amendments tonight? Maybe I was wrong.
You're discussing the motion, and if you, if, if what you're, what you're questioning about, you wanted to include, you can amend the motion.
I'm sorry, I thought that we were proposing to adopt the budget with some amendments, so I thought this was.
Yes, the motion is the adoption of the budget with amendments. But if there's something you want to add now, you can make an amendment to that motion.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. I'd, I'd like to, I mean, this is my last hurrah. I've served on the council for 12 years. All 12 years, I've wanted to do everything and anything that I could for the children in our town. As Robin said, this is earmarking money, and I would like to earmark, and you can agree or disagree, but I love, I loved Kabir's suggestion, and I'd like to earmark money, I guess.
Okay, so you need, you need a certain, you need, you need.
Twenty, $29,000 to keep the pool open through October.
Okay, so your, your amendment is $29,000 added to, maybe Matt can help you with what line that is.
Yeah, that, that would be to lines, lines 71 104, pool management fees.
And then you all can duke it out next May and decide if you want to open it early, but I'm, I'm all for it. Again, it's just an earmark, and it can be my last hurrah.
Okay, thank you. Cat, Mr. Town Attorney, is that motion, that's legally and technically sufficient, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, is there discussion on the motion? On the amendment to the motion? On the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, I think it was four to one.
Yeah. Jeffrey, just because otherwise people don't know, can you say who voted? Give the names of the people that voted in favor and those who voted against, please?
I saw Shaw, Zoe Gazer, Barr, and Peel in favor, and Circo against. Is there further discussion on the motion as amended? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, at the request of Councilmember Peel, we will go to item number 11. Public hearing motion to adopt an ordinance to amend the HVAC unit review process. Councilmember Peel.
Yes, I, I, we've been over this a number of times. This is really just streamlining the process for people who are coming in with, with permits for replacement units in the same location. So if anybody has any questions, we can go into more detail, but we did not have any questions when it was introduced, and.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Counsel, President Shaw, do you have any questions? Did you want to say something? Okay, Councilmember Zoe Gazer.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
No questions. I think it's a good idea to streamline the system a little bit.
Thank you. Councilor Barr.
Just a tiny technical point that I hope could just be incorporated, which is that heat pumps both heat and cool. And there is a section in there where it says air conditioners, cool, heat pumps, heat. It, it, it just need to add heat or cool for, for heat pumps, because they do both. That's all.
Well, perhaps when you're voting on it, somebody could amend it.
That sounds to me like an administrative change that could be made by Matt. It doesn't change the.
And I'd be glad if that.
It doesn't change the nature of the code amendment, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know if Ron agrees with me, but.
Mr. Town Attorney, could you please rule on that?
Yeah, I agree with Franny. The, the word heat pump appears in numerous locations, so the motion could be to edit all instances of heat pump to heat or cool pump.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Barr, do you have any further questions?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Sorry, I muted myself. Uh, yes, we do have one, one question from Kabir Kumar.
This is not specifically on the ordinance and the language of the ordinance. It's more a question to the town manager and the mayor. What would be the turnaround time on a permit like this? So a family submits it, by when would they expect to get the permit? I'm saying this because there will be times when families will face a need to get it fixed right away. And so I think the idea of the ordinance makes sense to me, but I'm concerned mildly about the turnaround time on permits, and specifically on this.
I'll let, let, I'll let the, um, the maker of the.
Yeah, I mean, I can answer that. We do have an emergency procedure in place already, Kabir. And so this, and when that happens, that's basically ratified later. So that, this is more of somebody who knows that are planning to replace their unit, and it just streamlines that process.
Well, this, this would replace the emergency procedure. And this would require 15 days' notice to the neighbors, so the permit could be issued on the 16th day.
I thought we were keeping in place the emergency language for, well, let me put it this way. I don't have any of this in front of me here tonight. I'm gonna have to defer to you, Ron, but if, if that's the case, then I think we probably need to look at correcting that and putting some of that procedure back into place.
Sure, so yeah.
Got my attention, so.
The emergency procedure could remain in place, and we could add the, well, add the administrative procedure as a.
Well, that's gonna have to be a, so let's see if there are any more comments from the residents or guests. Are there any further comments on this code amendment from residents or guests? Mr. Town Manager, did anybody?
No.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are you prepared to make a motion?
Look, before we make a motion, let me suggest that I don't, you know, I think everybody's in consensus on this issue. I don't feel the need to solve it tonight. If it needs to be reworked by Ron and brought forward to the next council meeting, then, you know, I'm willing to release desire on that and let you guys pass it in the next meeting, so.
So I, I have a suggestion. We, we could reduce the 15-day notice period to 10 days or seven days.
I think we're, we're trying to talk about. We're talking about people who need to replace their unit on an emergency basis. We have had a system in place for making that work, and, and whatever that was, it was not my intention to change that, so.
So you're prepared to make.
Isn't that in the code? That's in the code, isn't it? The emergency?
But with the emergency procedure, the applicants had to subsequently come before the council. So we were trying to eliminate that need to come before the council.
Come to the mayor.
So, so the major, the mayor, the mayor could issue an emergency permit, then issue notice to the neighbors, and then ratify
Right.
the permit administratively if no neighbor has objected.
I think, I think that it needs some work, and I think I'm gonna ask Ron to work on it, and I don't know who will bring it forward. Maybe it's Kabir.
But are you prepared to make the motion now?
I am not prepared to make a motion for a flawed ordinance, and if Ron can work on making it better, then I think that's the way to do it.
Okay, so no one is prepared to make a motion on this item?
Thank you. Thanks for catching that.
Okay, thank you. So we will now go, so is this, our Councilmember Zoe Gazer and Peel?
I'm, yes, I'm signing off. Good luck to all the new council members.
Before you go, I, I, I just wanted to say that we had planned to have tributes to the two of you at the end of this meeting, but we will, we will defer that to a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy, have fun.
I want to say that nobody would be sitting in, Jeffrey and Matt would not be sitting in their offices tonight if it had not been for Barbara. Would not be sitting in those beautiful offices that you can sort of see in the background there, and so we all need to recognize that even though we haven't gotten into the town hall yet, to see it in person, that it's really beautiful, and someday you'll get to see it, and that's thanks to Barbara.
And, and, and actually, it's thank, Franny, you were a part of the two, and Marnie, you were a huge supporter. So thank you all. It was, the one thing I'll say, we, we were a terrific team, and we accomplished a lot, and we enjoyed doing all of it. So I wish all the new CMs the, the same experience. It was just, it was just great working with you all. So thank you so much, and I'll see you guys around town.
Have your grandson.
I will, thanks. Bye. Oh, and Matt, wait, where's Matt? Matt, there you are. I read in the journal that you'll be getting, um, married, married in October.
That's the plan.
That was, that was the best part of the journal, other than the budget article. So anyway, congratulations. I'll see you all around.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, thank you. We will now go to item seven. Public hearing motion to approve a townwide survey on safety drafted and recommended by the traffic committee.
By the safety committee? It's a mistake, a typo.
Oh, yeah, by the public safety committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Um, I don't have anything to add. Straightforward, yeah, thank you for catching that. I apologize for the, the.
Okay, thank you, because I didn't catch it either. Counsel, President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman Peel, you're still here?
I'm still here. I was thinking of going off in a minute, but I, before, let's finish this matter, and then I'll say goodbye.
Okay, do you have any questions on this?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilor Barr.
Uh, we, we suggested some changes to the survey. I believe this is the original version of the survey, so I'm assuming that the final version will be somewhat modified, so I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Yes, uh, future Congress, uh, Councilmember Kumar has a comment.
I have suggestions on the survey. Who do I send them to, Matt?
Well, they would have to be amended tonight by the council.
Okay. So you want me to run, run through them right now?
Yeah. I mean, if you have suggestions, then the council can amend it.
There are a number of questions, to be honest with you.
I wouldn't feel comfortable. I mean, I'm happy to hear what the suggestions are, but this was a committee developed survey. I would not want to take action tonight on a, a changed survey that the committee hasn't had a chance to look at. It's their survey.
And, and, and Kabir, we, we actually had some comments on the survey, and I sent them to the chair of the committee, and who accepted them. So.
Sounds good, sounds good. And Jeffrey explained, I could have sent comments earlier. No worries.
I will work with Councilmember elected Kumar on this. So were there other, any other comments or questions on from residents or guests? Hearing none, are you prepared to make a motion? I, I, you're muted, Council President Shaw.
I move, I move that we approve the survey committee.
Thank you. Is there a second? I see Peel. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those of us, thank you.
Okay, I'm staying not for pool rules.
Okay, the next item.
That asked me to. Can't say no.
Okay, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to approve amendments to the 2021 pool rules as presented by pool, pool committee chair Matt Zaff, and recommended by the pool committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Sure. So, um, just very, very quickly, the pool committee had a, a few recommendations that they worked through, approved unanimously in the committee to work through some of, some of the uncertainties, especially at the beginning of the pool season, but to allow things to open up, hopefully, as the rest of the world also continues to open up. And otherwise, I'll turn it over to the distinguished chair, Matthew Zapp.
Please be brief.
I, I don't know how distinguished I am, but you should all have the link that Matt sent out. In essence, there, there's basically five things, you know, that I think you could, if you wanted to, just vote on as a bundle, unless anyone has questions. They're pretty self-explanatory, but I'm happy to take questions on any of the five. But as Matt said, this was all, you know, we, we went through an extensive discussion at the last pool committee meeting on all of these. There was lots of comments, lots of back and forth, and we came up with these that were unanimously approved. So I'll take any question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counsel, President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
No questions. I've got a great season.
Thank you. Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
None at this time.
Thank you. Counsel, are you prepared to make a motion?
I, we move that we approve amendments to the 2021 pool rules as presented by pool committee chair Matt Zaff, and recommended by the pool committee.
Thank you. Is there a second? I saw Barr. Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The next item is.
I'm gonna jump in and say goodbye, but before I do, I just want to tell you guys, um, that when I joined the council in 2012, I turned the council into the first female, all-female elected body in Montgomery County, and because of.
No, in Maryland.
Possibly in Maryland, but I'm sure.
It was in Maryland.
So WTOP apparently picked up on the local news one day, and a friend of mine was driving home from work, and she caught them telling the story on the radio, and they said, you know, Franny Peel has turned this council into an all-female elected body, and the WTOP guys said, "You go, girl!" And the WTOP guys said, "You go, girl!" on the radio. And my friend got home and called me and told me what had happened.
It was the first, it was the first all-female, five-member council in Maryland. There had been a three-member, all-female.
So I don't, I don't know for sure, but I'm suspecting that Kabir is also going to be, you know, be a groundbreaker for the council. So I'm proud of that. And along with all the other council members, I think we've had a pretty good run and gotten a lot done. So I'm sure I'll see you guys all around, but I'm going to head over to take care of my little daughter now and say goodnight.
Okay, goodnight, thank you.
Good night, thank you.
So the next item is public hearing motion to adopt the swim team rules and budget as presented by Swim Committee Chair Jeff Mascot and recommended by the Swim Team Committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, so again, I'll keep it brief, but the swim team folks put together a really great document that you have before you that lays out their season and their requests. I think the big takeaway is, one, already incorporated in the budget, is that the town continue to provide a part of the payment for the, for the coaches, for the swim team. And so that was approved in the budget tonight. They laid out the key dates for the season for you, practice schedule, et cetera. But I think the other thing that perhaps we can think about moving forward is trying to, trying to make their budgeting easier so that their season isn't split up in half. That the swim team has been largely self-funded, aside from that expenditure by the town. But of course, the pool season, as we know, runs from May to October. And that means that the swim team season is bisected almost exactly in half, which makes things difficult for them. And so hopefully, we can help come to a good solution on that moving forward. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to.
Thank you to Committee Chair Jeff Mascot for being here tonight. And is there, is there something you want to add?
Well, first, just thank you so much to Mayor Slaven and the town council for just continuing to support the swim team. Whenever we have our banquets, Mayor Slaven comes. He's decked out in like the Somerset Dolphins purple. It's a lot of fun. And in fact, if you're on the town council and have never been to a swim meet on Wednesday nights or Saturday mornings, it's just a wonderful community of adults and kids of all ages who come together. And swimming is just an excuse, really, to just have a great time and really build community, build friendships. It's just a wonderful spirit. So this may not be the best season because we're scaling it back, but I definitely want to invite you guys to come and see it all in action. We have over 150 kids usually who participate from the town. And, you know, usually more than 100 adults who are parent volunteers. It's just a wonderful, wonderful thing. So thanks again for your support.
Thank you very much. Council, President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No questions, but I really did like the report. And I also liked the recommendations. And Bolton and I have talked some about trying to get both the pool and the swim team on a calendar year rather than a fiscal year budget, at least to be able to present the picture for that. So it's a lot easier for all of us to understand what a season looks like. We may have to budget by fiscal year because that's what the state says we have to do.
But that's law. We can't unfortunately change.
Right, we can't, but we can develop, I mean, it's complicated, but we can develop a season picture for both the pool and the swim team. And I really appreciate the support of Jeff and Ann on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo, do you have any questions? You have no questions, right? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barr.
I have no questions.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, not this time.
Thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Move that we adopt the swim team rules and budget as presented by Swim Committee Chair Jeff Mascot and recommended by the Swim Team Committee.
Is there a second? I see Barr. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. And now we will turn to the manager's report.
Sure, thank you. So I will again try to keep it brief and then answer any questions that you might have. I think in terms of the budget, we already sort of went through a lot of those questions and what I've written up in terms of income, expenses, and the relief, the relief plan. There has been a lot of work by the committees over the last month and the last time since I was able to give a report to you. One, one thing that I did want to talk about was, was contracts. I did receive a proposal from Ray Brothers to provide us with extra street cleaning this spring in case the cicadas get really bad. But in any case, we'll begin, I think, we'll begin, I think it was not next week, but the week after that is when we'll have our first street cleaning. Let's see, so second was the audit RFP. I had hoped to finish it today, so I wrote in the report that I sent it to the audit committee. I need to run it through Ron quickly before I send it to the committee. But in any case, they'll be getting that in the next day or so. And we will post that so that we can get somebody selected for, I think I said it, for the June meeting. Should be straightforward, so I don't foresee a problem with a three- or four-week period to receive some bids. We had the website contract. As I said, I thought Jesse James had a really good proposal. The other one that I also thought would have been a good selection was Revise, who I had, I'd actually worked with before. They redesigned the website when I was at Martin's Editions. And so I think we had multiple, multiple good ones to select from in that case. I have had the plumber visit the town pool. I got a message from American Pool that they have their final inspection tomorrow. So hopefully by tomorrow, we should have the official green light to go ahead with everything. I don't foresee any, foresee any issues. And I guess just the last thing I was going to say was a thank you to the outgoing council members. Two of them are gone, but, but Marnie, you're here. And I guess this will, this will be posted, so for posterity's sake. And I'll reach out to everybody individually. But just wanted to express my gratitude and admiration to all three of you for the countless hours that you've dedicated towards the betterment of the town, of your town, and your wisdom, your vision, thoughtfulness, leadership, experience. All be missed on the council. I will certainly miss it as well. I'm really looking forward to working with all of the new council members and Councilmembers Circo and Barr to continue working with them. But I'll just, I will always be grateful to you three for giving me this opportunity to serve in Somerset. So thank you personally, and thank you for all the time and service that you've put into the town.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Since I'm actually not in town, I don't know the answer to this question. Usually, we try and do the street sweeping after the cherry, cherries come down from the trees on Fallstone and Trent because people complain about dragging the little cherry things in, and it's staining their carpets and their shoes and everything else. Is the, have the cherries come down? And so is the street sweeping scheduled for after they've come down?
They've started to come down. They're not completely taking over the streets, but we're getting there. And I think the timing will work out, will work out well.
That's good. Good. Well, since I'm sort of looking more at the beach environment, I didn't really know, so I wanted to check. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thanks for the report, Matt.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr.
No questions, Matt.
Okay, thank you. So the final item on tonight's agenda is, which is reappearing for the first time in a long time, the mayor's report. I had wanted to convene a tribute session to the three council members. And we will, I will, what I will do is, of course, I want to be associated with Matt's remarks, but I want to call this the beginning of the tribute season. And I think everybody knows how I feel about Council President Shaw and her. Is it 15 years?
15.
What, it doesn't matter, decades? It seems like a decade. It seems like a century. Because, because our town has transformed, our town government has transformed and modernized and professionalized in so many unbelievable ways. And all of it is really a tribute to Council President Shaw. And that's all I, you know, I've written about it this month in the journal about her. And I have spoken with the two incumbents that remain and the three new council member elects. And we will, one of our tasks in the coming months is to plan appropriate tributes that can be attended by many more people that are here tonight. So I know the hour's late. And so I don't, I don't want to extend this meeting any longer. But I do want to, you know, just point out what a significant historic figure Council President Shaw has been in Somerset. And it is a huge, huge void that is, that we all have to try to fill. But she has helped put so many systems in place that are going to guarantee our success. You know, particularly Dr. Shaw in the area of the budget, which is, of course, as everyone knows, and as I've preached for two decades, it's really the most important thing that we do. And Marnie added so much to making that what it is today. And it really is the model, not only for all the municipalities in Montgomery County, but probably in the state. So with that, before we adjourn, I will give, I will give Marnie the final word.
Well, I want to thank you, Jeffrey, for your kind words and Matt as well. I've really enjoyed working with you. I want to say thank you to my colleagues on the council and wish the incoming council members a very good experience. I want to say thank you to Phil, whom I think I recruited for the Budget Committee, and it was one of the best things that happened to Somerset.
I'm sure he did. I mean, you formed, you established the Budget Committee. You contributed to our very thorough process. And, and, you know, your knowledge of all this stuff is just unbelievable.
I'll be happy to help out if anybody has questions. But I really have enjoyed being on the council and working with the residents. And thank everybody for the opportunity.
Okay, well, thank you. And we will see you at the next opportunity, the next tribute session to be determined. So thanks a lot, everybody.
Bye.
See you soon. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, Marnie.